Hi, I'm Kim Anderson, President of the Fairville Area Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to our Candid Conversations with Candidates. The election is on November 6th, and it's very important to become informed on local issues and to exercise your right to vote. Now let's meet the candidates for Rice County Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Dora Norton. I'm running for County Commissioner in District 1, and I've got a lot to say. So if you want to talk to me sometime later after this video, you can contact me at kadoranorton@gmail.com or my website at kathleen doran norton dot com. While my first jobs out of college were in social services, I've been involved in research and information systems, forecasting, and data analysis for most of my work life in a variety of different industries. My job after earning an MBA was for the Center for Governmental Research in upstate New York. I'm a public policy wonk. I'm curious about how one makes government work to create a better community. And that's why I'm a member of the Citizens League and have participated in studies on higher education and healthcare. George Bernard Shaw, who was a good Irishman and actually a county commissioner, said, "Reformers have the idea that change can be achieved by brute sanity." Now, reform is sort of an old fashioned word, but I think we can make Rice County better even if it takes brute sanity. We can collaborate and innovate and rethink local government. We know that my generation is retiring from the workforce. At the county commissioners meeting I attended this week, the administrator reported nine vacancies. Now is the time to rethink county government, to do all the things that good businesses and good farming operations have done. Work smarter, not harder. Use technology. Be a data-driven operation. And yet there's nothing in the county budget for extending information systems or networking. We need to move beyond the single goal of having the lowest taxes in the state. That is just plain puffery. It's time for the county to create meaningful measures of success. Time for county leadership, both directors and the board, to have an information dashboard of critical processes. If an apron don't fix it is a fine saying, but we've got cracks and crumbles that we don't even know are there, and we ought to fix it before it breaks. We should rethink, retool, remake local government. Collaborate, innovate, resort to brute sanity. We know all of Minnesota, not just Fairville, is becoming more ethnically diverse. We know there's young families struggling. Fifty-one percent of those students in Fairville schools are on low or pre-reduced lunches. Our county's the only county of eighty-seven counties that can't process paperwork to give our children food, a roof over their heads, childcare for their parents to work, or medical assistance. These children have them at risk for our future, our future workforce. Before the redistricting, I thought about, and thinking about running, I visited a manufacturing plant in Fairville with some of the members of our township planning commission. And that business is growing and needs to leave, even though the owner lives here and would love to stay. Why? Because there's not enough skilled workers here in Rice County. Welders, tool and die makers, computer-aided manufacturing. I'm pleased to hear that South Central College will be expanding its technical programs. Education is not the county's job, but we ought to find a way to collaborate with South Central and with the school districts to make sure our kids know that there's a future in using your head and your hands. Workforce development ought to be a part of the county's economic development initiative. Only eleven counties spend any taxpayer money on economic development, and we want them. Overall, Rice County receives less than the average proportion of state and federal money. Economic development, though, is a pretty good return. A couple million dollars on a couple hundred thousand dollars that we spend. But I think we've spent far too much money and have too tightly focused on a two-mile strip along Highway 5. We need to stop thinking about the Lone Ranger riding in to save the county economy and think about our own local heroes. There needs to be hundreds of local economic heroes, small businesses that we allow to grow. And we need to rethink planning and zoning to allow for that birth to happen. In my township, there is an eleven-acre parcel that is simply polluting the ground. We ought to remake that into developable, usable land. And I'll bet the same thing holds true in every township in this county. There are hundreds of new technologies we ought to be considering, and we ought to be doing that. We need to flip our economy, rethinking waste as fuel source and abandoning useless land at its opportunity. We need to make Rice County better. We need to innovate, collaborate, and rethink government. Thank you.
My name is Jake Gillen, your present county commissioner. I represent District 1, which consists of Walcott Township, Richland, Wheeling, Cannon City, Northfield, and Bridgewater Townships. The St. Olaf Precinct in the southeast corner of Northfield. The most pressing issues are, to me, social services and transportation, or our country roads, as they are so-called. Social services will get straightened out as we go down the road, or time. The problem being, it is not sustainable under the present system with ten thousand people on some kind of assistance in the county, which is nearly twenty percent of the population in Rice County. Some things that need to change, but we are working on that. As far as transportation, it will take a hundred million dollars to catch up, and we don't have that. We bonded five years ago for thirteen million dollars for roads. At this time, that is all gone. I will recommend to the county board after the first of the year that we bond for another thirteen million dollars in 2013 for the next five years. We can bond for about two percent interest, which is a really good rate, which will allow us to continue to move forward for the next five years. I am positive Rice County, the county is a business-friendly county. We work very hard at it. Our economic development director doesn't miss an opportunity that comes along. I sit on a committee that... And I sit on a committee, and I am impressed with all the leads that she has going on at all times, but leads are only leads. The SAGE project is one of the, was one of the biggest projects in the state in 2011, and it is right here in Fairville and in Rice County. I would like for your continued support. On November 6th, at the polls, please vote. It is your privilege. Thank you.
Gillen Malika, Rice County Commissioner, District 2, Northfield. I am running for reelection, and the new district will include all of Northfield, or the majority of Northfield. Right now, I currently have part of, I have done this at part of the city of Northfield. The new district will encompass the majority of Northfield. Two precincts will not be in my district, they'll be in District 1. The issues I believe that the county are going to be facing today, in the past, today, and in the future is balancing the budget. When you have government, local government aid coming from the state that has been trimmed throughout the years, however, I believe the county's done a pretty good job of having foresight on that, and we've adjusted our budgets previous to that money not coming in. The hard part is when they readjust during the middle of your budget year. So we've been kind of budgeting as though we're not going to see some of that money. So that's worked out really good. Some of the other things we're facing in the county is the economy, and we know what that's done for many people with unemployment, lack of jobs. I think one of the largest things we have done, we had hired an economic development director a few years ago, and I do believe that that has helped. Her job is to work with the smaller communities who don't have economic development directors, and then to participate with the municipalities in economic development. I think she's done a great job. We've seen an increase in social services. A lot of that is due to two reasons. One, federal government has lowered the requirements for food assistance. Before, they used to take in people's assets and income. Now it's just income-based. So we've seen an increase for that reason, but we've also seen an increase because of the economy and a lot of people having been laid off. So there goes back to economic development. Those are two major issues. Some of the other issues is cleaning up the lakes area. Transportation is another issue we have to deal with and look at long-term. Is the county business-friendly? I do believe that we are business-friendly. Again, we hired an economic development director. Deanna has worked very well with the chambers of Northfield, Fairville, Lawnsdale. She's worked well with the municipalities in sharing resources and working together on projects. She's also helped out the small cities, done this, and helped, you know, the helpers there for Morristown and Lawnsdale as well. I think that more collaboration is needed. I think we need to continue on. We've done some studies of the county and the municipalities for economic development as a tool, and I think we need to take that tool and move forward with it and take those to the next steps. We've been fortunate to get some businesses here in the Fairville area. Sage Electrochromics, B&amp;B Manufacturing, there's an aeroponics lettuce company, and we actually have another one looking from Canada that building in Fairville. So the jobs are coming. They never come in the pace that we would like. We'd like to come faster. I would like to see more work on the north end of the county as far as economic development. The only problem there is there's not a lot of available properties in the Northfield area for large-scale development that would have to come later down the road as Northfield makes some decisions on business parks. So I appreciate the support, and I appreciate the vote. Thank you.
My name is Carol King, and I'm running for the third district county commissioners office that's newly formed this year for the redistricting. The past almost twelve years, I have served as your city councilperson, elected three times. This year, I chose not to run for a county, for a city council, but rather for the district, the third district, because of the new formation inside the city of Fairville. I felt it was very important that this new district person had the representation inside the city. It could be somebody who's had experience in passing government and making of a city. In the past, I have served the city on various different committees and enterprises that we've undertaken and been very successful at. I've personally been involved with the Pearl Street, where we just completed a three-year plan on its future, and also the annexation committee with townships. I've also served with the rural fire department agreement committee, the Milltown Trail, the community ed, and also just served on the charter commission last year where we will revote the charter for the city of Fairville. And while you're a city councilperson, I've also done things like worked with the sewer plant treatment, rebuild, and that's very important for the citizens. And also, I did the water mediation, water treatment plant remediation on the water toller that we knew had all cracked. I also served on the welcome center when it was first established, and from that, we were able to start the first-ever community garden with a member of this food district. I also served in the Johnson Hall Task Force Committee. If the hospital wanted to save that building, I was more than willing to step forward as a former hospital board member to help them save that. They have been fairly successful and gained great funds through the work of that group. I also served on the, served on a committee to get the workshands center done, so now we have it not stopped for everybody in the city of Fairville and the businesses. I also served even before the city council, and that was on the pool task force, on the park and recreation board, on the community ed board then when we were first formed. I've been past president of the Fairville Snowball Club and worked with the youth of the city in developing a good new plan for safety for our youth and our community. I'm very proud of that. I was born in Fairville and attended the local schools, and my background is in nursing and accounting. I've been able to work with different issues for the city of Fairville over the past, oh, I would say twenty years. I'm very proud of what I've accomplished, and I feel that I would be a good representative with this very important new transition on the county commission. As you know, it's important that Fairville has its own voice on that county commission, and I think I'm a good person to do that. I've been, in the past, willing to speak up and yet work behind the scenes with these groups. I have experience in working with all the intergovernmental communities and the state, federal level, too. I wish that people would consider me, to elect me as the new county commissioner. I will speak up and work as hard as I have to save Fairville in the future, but then in this capacity as a county commissioner. And I want to thank the chamber again for this opportunity and hope that you'll vote for me and see that I will be your new voice on the county commission. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Miller. I'm the candidate for Rice County Commissioner in the third district. The third district is basically the east side of Fairville, from Main Street Avenue over to the east side. The districts were redrawn this year. Every ten years, they need to be looked at and see where the population has grown or whether it has maybe declined. That makes up the districts. The, I think the biggest thing facing a county commissioner now is the, probably the social services department as a county. They spend twenty-two percent of the county's budget, and it's getting higher. It needs to be looked at to find maybe some answers to do things differently. I think it's working well now, but I don't think they can keep up. We've been asked about business development in the county. In the past, I've worked with the county, been on the city council of Fairville for seventeen years. We worked on getting Sage to locate here. We worked on Melvantis. Even though I didn't come to fruition, we still worked on it collectively, the county, the city, the townships. And we proved that if you cooperate, you can get things done. And that's a key factor in any kind of organization. You have to cooperate, and things will get done. I'm a lifelong resident of Fairville. I lived here with my wife and my own three kids and two grandchildren. I would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election in November. I've always been accessible to just about everybody, and I will continue to do so. If you have a problem, you can call me anytime. Again, thank you for the opportunity to chat with you.
Hi, I'm Steve Bowler. I'm the incumbent and candidate for Rice County Fourth District. I live in Wells Township, and as of January 2013, the fourth district will consist of Wells Township and the first and fourth precinct of Fairville. Been asked to come here today to address a couple of questions, and the first one is what some of the most pressing issues that Rice County faces at this time. I feel that, two issues come to mind. One is funding for the transportation department. In the past, it seems that funding was not such a large problem as it has been now with these economic conditions that we're in. And we bonded for, we had a fifteen million dollar bond a few years ago, and a little over thirteen million of those dollars went to the transportation department. If need be, and we're able to rebond again, I would support a future bond for funding the transportation department. Another issue is the pressure that we have on our social service department. There has been a lot of activity there, a lot of applications, and we have a lot of unfunded mandates from the state. We're going to continue lobbying our legislators to either fund these mandates, or if the mandates aren't necessary, then to discontinue them. We have just recently hired two new staff for that department, and we also purchased a very expensive computer software program that is, hopefully, is going to expedite applications and easily, more easily keep the record-keeping. And hopefully, that will alleviate some of the problems that we have in the social service department. After this program's been initiated and is in place, we'll take another look at what the staff levels are there and if it's necessary to hire more people. At this time, that's where the social service department stands. The other question I have is, do I think that Rice County is as business-friendly as need be to attract new businesses? I think Rice County has been very, very business-friendly. We've offered tax abatements and economic development loans. Just in the past few years, we've opened a new economic development department and staffed that with a full-time staff person. The only thing I think that we may be able to do is to increase a little bit of funding for marketing, but we have to be careful. We can't just keep throwing money into it. There's a lot of competition out there for, for new businesses.
Hello, I'm Dick Cook, Richard Cook. I'm running for Rice County Commissioner, District 5, which is the western part of the county. Primarily agricultural, I don't have any of the city of Fairville for my district, but I was born in the city of Fairville. Grew up here, attended college at the University of Minnesota, came back, took a position with the Rice County Sheriff's Office, moved onto a lake in the country in the ag zone. And so I have several friends that are farmers and also people who live on the lake. And started my career with the sheriff's office, and many of you may know me as Deputy Cook, Sergeant Cook, or Sheriff Cook, which I ultimately attained, and I spent twelve years of that as sheriff of Rice County, and I retired in 2010. You may also know me as a volunteer, community volunteer in several organizations, co-chair of the Salvation Army, co-chair of the Rice County Veterans Memorial, past president of the Fairville Rotary Club, Boy Scout leader in fourteen years, and many other involvements in the community. So I'm totally invested in our community and Rice County, and I see some challenges ahead for us all, though. Primarily, and most assuredly, is the economy that, an uncertain economy that we currently have with it. With Rice County's budget comprised of half aid from federal, state agencies, and fees and services, we are dependent upon what happens with the state, which is looking at a one billion dollar deficit in the next biennium. And we all know what the federal government is facing in the deficit. So we're really dependent on what happens, not only with us but with others. We're fortunate to have a couple good economic drivers here. One of those is our agricultural base, and which we're very fortunate to have dodged the drought this summer, and it's looking good for our agricultural partners throughout the county. And we also have Interstate 35, which is what I see as a goldmine for Rice County. It bisects us right down the middle. It brings a lot of commerce, traffic, visitors for our natural resources like our lakes and our recreational activities. And we have to look at that as an economic driver, not only for Rice County and Fairville, which it bisects, but also our partners in Lawnsdale, Dundas, and Northfield, which are, have good highways that spur off of 35 and can benefit as well. I feel as a county commissioner, looking at it from a parochial way, as a district commissioner is good, because there are certain concerns for each district, but I'm also a big-picture guy, and I like to look at it as a collaboration of all different entities within the county so we can work together for county goals, which is to fill these vacant lots that we have throughout the county, get these foreclosure homes off the market, and fill those with individuals that have employment with either expansion of business here or new business that we can direct to the areas that they're most suited for. On the campaign trail, I've heard some concern about, you know, there's too many rules and too many different layers of rules. We don't understand, you know, what this business is doing here, or why you would want that business. And I feel that, that it's a commissioner's job to communicate to the public those types of discrepancies, to get that information out to the public and communicate that. And I, I personally have the time to do that. I have a lot of connections and networks throughout the county, state, and even the federal. Worked with all those different entities in different capacities and would be willing to continue doing that on all different levels. And I am looking forward to a good run for commissioner, and I'll do you a great job getting there when I get there.
Hi, my name is Jeff Doc, and I'm current Rice County Commissioner for the fifth district and running for the upcoming term. I am married to my wife Annie. We have three children and five grandchildren. I'm a lifetime resident of Rice County, graduate of Northfield High School, and a graduate of University of Minnesota in Agriculture with Agronomy as my major. I'm also a full-time farmer and past dairy farmer. About twelve years ago, I quit dairy farming and currently raising mainly hay and selling hay and also direct marketing draftman beef, which we usually have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty head of beef cattle on the farm. One of the questions being asked is, what's the most pressing issue for Rice County? And I think that a lot of people would answer, it's unfunded mandates and probably social services is a hot topic. And definitely, those are issues, but I think that things that strike home, especially for some of the rural people, is the fact that our transportation and the deterioration of our roads. So I think that it's becoming more and more of a problem because, simply because they're going to have funds to keep up with the road reconstruction. And how we are addressing that, well, in the past, we bonded, the fifteen million dollar last bonding that we did, thirteen million of that went to the roads in capital improvements. The other thing we've done is also purchased our own seal coating equipment so that we can keep the roads as good as they possibly can for as long as we can. So I think transportation is what people see. It's kind of a hands-on thing, especially rural people driving down a lot of the county roads, probably noticing more than anything. And I think that that's a major issue for us in Rice County and will be coming up here, especially since the funding end of things is always an issue. Another question asked is, are we business-friendly? I believe we are business-friendly. Rice County, the board, has set up an economic development department, which is not a common practice throughout the counties in Minnesota. And I think that we, by setting that up, we have somebody that's a go-to person for businesses, business that might be interested in Rice County. We have a knowledgeable person to answer their questions, who knows where real estate is and what real estate opportunities are out there, and also what kind of amenities there are in the different real estate properties. It's a tougher environment right now, and I think everybody agrees that... So it's a tougher environment right now, and I think everybody agrees that we, as in other counties, are competing for businesses to lure them into our county. It's kind of like fishing, I think, it really is. You have to have the right bait, and, but you also have to have fish out there that are willing to bite and take the bait. So business is a very important part of the county, both for jobs and for tax base. The more businesses, the commercial industrial property that you have, the less burdened is on residential properties. So those are some of the major things going on right now, and I've been commissioner for the past three and a half years and enjoyed it, and hoping that I continue to enjoy it. Thank you.